Thank you. Welcome everybody to this meeting of the Audit and Governance Committee on Wednesday the 9th of June at 6:30pm. We now commence broadcasting of the meeting. Welcome. And we are, this is being livestreamed and it will be uploaded to the YouTube channel tomorrow and there is an audio recording. I will now introduce members and officers and visitors that are present at the meeting. Thank you. We have councillor Crask, councillor Becker, councillor Godfrey, councillor Laming, councillor Bentoe, councillor Gennel, councillor Miller, Mrs Keyes, Mrs Kirkman, Mr Shaw and Mr Watson from Winchester City Council and Beverley Davies from Southern Audit Partnerships. Thank you. And councillor Neil Cutter. Sorry, you were being so quiet. Do we have any apologies please?
Chair, we have no apologies.
And do we have any disclosures of interest?
Yes, please Chair.
Carry on.
As a non prejudicial interest as an employee of KNG.
Thank you very much. Any others? Thank you. We move to the third agenda item, the appointment of the vice chairperson for this municipal year. May I have a nomination please?
Yeah, I would like to propose councillor Bentoe.
Thank you very much. And do you have a second, councillor Laming?
I'll see if I can.
Thank you very much. Are we agreed?
Agreed.
With a little more enthusiasm please.
Agreed.
Thank you very much. I have no chairperson's announcements, so we move to agenda item five, the Audit and Governance Committee Work Programme on pages five to 10. Do we have any questions on this work programme? Councillor Godfrey, thank you.
Thank you very much. Couple of points. Apart from tonight's item looking back at the internal audit programme report for last year, I don't see any internal audit items on the work programme and wonder whether we will be formally looking at progress during the year. And secondly, we have no separate item for dealing with the non operational assets of the council. And I don't recall having looked at those last year in either of the internal or external auditors' studies, separate from the financial report. And whether or not we should be looking at those as a committee, long overdue inspection of progress.
Mrs Kirkman, would you like to take that one? The second one first, I think that's the...
In respect of the non operational assets of the council, councillor Godfrey, we'd want to take that away councillor Godfrey. Can you give some specific examples of what you're expecting to see there?
Well, the old depot site, what's happening to it, what are we doing about it? Whether or not the decision not to demolish the old load centre is a good financial one. Decisions like that, major investment, non operational properties we have doing a lot, nothing with.
It was the non operational property, councillor Godfrey, so far it is still operational in terms of being asset based in operation because it's still used offices by Royal Dixon.
Yeah, non operational as in not part of the HRA.
Mrs Kirkman, would you like to come back to us on that?
Yeah, absolutely. You can take that away Chair. And I can assist with number one if that was a question?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so that was in respect of the reports from our internal audit. They are included in the quarterly reports, councillor Godfrey, so all quarterly reports have that. You often get a double if there's a year end report or when they want to do a charter. Often you'll see two reports, but it's always contained within our quarterly reports.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any more questions? Councillor Crask?
Just looking at the work programme, I see a meeting on the 11th of November covering pay policy. We had a pay policy on the meeting of the 11th of February. And we talked a lot about not just pay but broader HR matters as well. So I wondered if we imagined doing something similar there. I think we had a lot of questions, particularly on staff wellbeing. It'd be nice to get something, a report back on staff wellbeing.
Mrs Kirkman?
Yeah, councillor Crask, I'm sure councillor Powell, the Chair, will confirm I had this conversation with her before you asked this question. But in reflecting on the work programme, I added my note to say that's also the general HR paper update that we expect to enter this committee every six months. So that would be the first one of that. So we're really set for the November, at the first report coming to this committee that type and then ask for feedback if that was the type of information we need to expand it from then. But that will be the responsibility of Rob O'Reilly for HR Services.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Councillor Becker, thank you.
Thank you. Looking at the work programme, there doesn't seem to be any mention of the vision of the constitution. I wondered if there is a plan for that to come to this committee for this...
There's just not a date councillor Becker. What I don't want to do is put it in for a date and then say, oh, the next one. So it's not a priority in this immediate recovery and restoration phase that we are in, but it's absolutely work that needs to happen. Like in your example, the HR update paper was actually part of the constitutional review. So we were bringing it forward to be a recommendation in that. Events have overtaken, there've been conversations with this committee, so we're just doing that one. Okay, we consider that to be an important paper to bring to use. We're doing that outside of the review, similar to the model code of conduct, which we're doing outside of the constitutional review. Because a lot of the remaining items are changes in job titles, references in the wrong place, and there were a few minor tweaks in terms of some of the delegations. So the review in nature is not affecting the operation of the council, but the HR paper, the model code of conduct, needs to come forward.
One further question unrelated to the constitution, recovery from COVID, the return to the office, this comes back to the HR matters. Is it possible to have an update on those plans? Just to get the flavour of how the staff are doing, how the staff are coping, I don't want it to be turned as a return to work because obviously everyone has been working incredibly hard.
Yeah, councillor Becker, let me consider the best way to go about that because we know in November is a bit too late, you know, that would be after the event. Certainly we've done another staff survey that was done for the whole of April. You know, I put my hand up and say I expected after the gender effect where, you know, I think that really hit a lot of people quite hard. I put my hand up, I'm sure they've finished me in January. So I think I expected to see a gender dip in the answer to some of those questions. I was totally wrong. There's been an increase in communication with staff in one times, in team meetings. So actually we were really pleased with the outcome. But I can certainly report more of those. But I think that needs to be informed in November. So let me think about how I can work that into it.
Thank you very much, Mrs Kirkman. Do we have any other questions? Matthew, you have, no, Mr Shaw, sorry, you have a note of matters which will be appearing on the programme.
Yes, thank you Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr Shaw. And we are recommended to the work programme be approved. Is that agreed? Thank you very much. Moving on to, I don't want to lose my agenda, to agenda item, or the minutes, the minutes, item six on pages 11 to 14, are those agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Moving on, is there any public participation?
There isn't Chair.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item eight, the Governance Quarterly Update on pages 15 to 30. Mrs Kirkman, I think you're introducing this paper.
Thank you Chair. Yes, members, this is the usual report that you get quarterly to this committee. I just particularly highlight the addition of 12.16 to 12.20, which is a risk management update about the Star Train sessions that have happened between the last meeting and this meeting, just for your information as the consideration of risk. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions on this paper? Could I remind you to refer to the page number when asking your question? I'm afraid I have some questions. Looking at page 21, looking at the mobile devices actions, we have two high priorities that are outstanding. And although I recognise the IT department have been very heavily engaged during COVID, I do feel that we ought to be asking for a substantial progress report. And I wonder if we would like to ask for that to appear at the next meeting or indeed a appearance by the relative service.
Chair, if I can assist you, we do have the head of corporate IT online this evening, virtually through Teams, but he will be able to address that for you and answer any questions that you have in terms of progress.
I guess we'd like to hear from him, don't you?
That's correct, Madam Chairperson. Thank you very much. Indeed, they are two outstanding actions. However, this is something that we've been working with a quite determined focus to get it towards a position where towards the end of Quartal Three, would we be able to deploy new technologies? The reason, not just because of the COVID, why this is outstanding is simply that this project has grown in size and in scope and in importance. So what started out as a relatively small action for one councillor, we've learned throughout the course of the journey that actually there are greater efficiencies and opportunities available for the shared service if we review the whole and revisit the whole process. And considering the fact that we have the capabilities and needed equipment processes in place, this is an improvement activity which will take a while to get it implemented
Thank you. Do you have an idea of time scales?
The time scales are that our plan is to review every single piece of work and projects, what we are doing in IT at the moment in the Quartal Three. And we would then move on to implementation. We would hope to get this done by the end of this calendar year.
However, we do have two high priority items that were identified in the internal audit report. Could you offer this committee some reassurance about the risks associated with those high priority items?
Yes, we have done the risk assessment on this one and I mentioned we have the assurances in place operationally that we are covered. We are reviewing the resource and this is one of the items that we've tracked to be definitely the high priority activity. Once we get certain other projects out of our way which relate to the customer services delivery, including the telephony renewal. So this is very high on the priority list of our actions for the coming six months now.
Thank you very much. And how do you suggest we demonstrate that we have your reassurance that these are managed risks?
My proposal would be that I will prepare a scoping document highlighting the kind deliverables, high level timelines and the associated resource for Lisa Kirkman.
I think we'd be very grateful to see that, probably not. Thank you very much, Mr Varela. Very kind. Do we have any other questions, members? Councillor Gennel?
Yes, the same criteria applies to a nice one, page 22, which is health and safety, but it does not involve...
I also had a question on that area.
Yes, what is it? And to be a high priority, then we should have at least a net of it drawing our attention to what it is.
Mrs Kirkman, would you like to take this one?
Chair, I just found a house on the call and can probably add more detail to that inquiry on the health and safety audit than I can.
Thank you very much. Mr Howson, are you with us?
Thank you Chair, I'm here, yes, I can take that question. So you're absolutely right, there are a number of outstanding overdue internal audit actions relating to the health and safety audit that was completed last year, two of which are high priority. Of those actions, there are a real mix of complexity and resources required to complete those actions, some of which are very straightforward and can be completed quite quickly. One of the issues is that health and safety has moved across teams within the council. It was previously in asset management and it's now within the health protection team managed by Dave Ingram. There is a vacant post that will take responsibility for this work, which so far the council has been unable to recruit to. So we'll see with the resources in that team that have been stretched responding to COVID, they've not been able to tackle these issues, these overdue internal audit actions. However, of those actions, we're now relooking at them because there are a number of them that we can realistically get completed fairly quickly, fairly painlessly, in time for the next meeting in July to show a much better position, give the committee assurance that these actions are being completed.
And are two high priority items included in that list that you think you can resolve with all this?
The two high priority actions actually relate to risk assessments. The risk assessments for health and safety were carried out from memory almost two years ago, so they are reasonably current. But we now need to review those actions on an annual basis. So at least we have got those risk assessments. We do need to go through them again to make sure that they are still fit for purpose. That will in all honesty take a little bit longer to complete, may well be once we get a new health and safety officer in post.
Councillor Gennel, do you have further questions?
Yeah, where do we distill that, councillors, from what we are seeing in front of us? This is not making a lot of sense as a report to bring to a committee for us to discuss.
Mr Howson? Again, I think the same assurance we're looking for is that these matters are in hand, that progress is being made in order that we can offer assurance to the rest of council. I think that's the point we're making, councillor Gennel, isn't it? Thank you.
If I may Chair, I'd like to bring Richard Botham in on the call.
Very well, thank you.
Thank you Chair, yeah, I've spoken directly with David Ingram on this matter. We are in the process of doing exactly as Mr Howson has highlighted, some of those actions about reviewing the risk assessments and reviewing the current policy. We have been unfortunate in not being able to recruit to the post that Mr Ingram has been trying to recruit to. But that doesn't mean that there isn't anyone managing health and safety. Mr Ingram and his colleague Mike Greenwood have a direct responsibility for that. They're reporting directly to ELB. And we have a meeting established with our service leads to take these specific issues forward. And we will be able to bring back a report to the next meeting identifying the progress that we've been able to make in that matter. I think the reassurance that we need to give is that yes, they're high priority for the leadership team, certainly a high priority for the health protection team. And it isn't work that isn't being undertaken because there's a vacancy at the moment. It's, you know, Mr Ingram is reporting directly to ELB and we'll bring a report back next time on the progress that we've made.
I think we're all well aware of the load there has been on that team and express our sympathies. Is it staff or the general public that are at risk?
Chair, this is the internal health and safety service, so it is a responsibility of all managers to maintain the risk assessments. And they're well aware of that priority and are undertaking it. It's the documentation of that process that we need to evidence to be able to write these actions of. So the reassurance that yes, the priority is understood and work is being undertaken is just we weren't quite in a position to confirm that those actions are complete. So that's really what we need to bring back to the next meeting, fully accept councillor Gennel's comments about the update in this report. That should have been much clearer than it was, apologies for that.
Mr Botham, councillor Gennel, are you reassured?
Slightly, however, I will just say that that is a very broad brush stroke over the top. And I don't think that with the paucity of the amount of meetings, the things that are in orange and red should come to us with a lot more detail. And I know that's going to take time, but I'm not going to wait for it for another meeting. I think that is too long because what happens when we get to meeting number two, slid to three or four in red? It's not right. It's council speak and it's not, it's not right for this committee.
Mr Botham, would you like to respond to that?
I understand the point councillor Gennel is making and if members do not feel that this requires an update ahead of the next meeting, I'm happy to give that.
I think we'd like that one.
I think we would.
Do we have any other questions on this report? Thank you. Councillor Miller?
Councillor Miller, if I can hand up the board?
I'm sorry, I don't have a...
Councillor Miller was first.
Actually, councillor...
My very small point of clarification, the cost impact assessment is referred to on page 28, as coming to this meeting on the 22nd of July 2021. But in the previous report said it was coming to the September meeting. I just wanted to confirm which I was.
Councillor Miller, I think that's a September meeting because when Liz Hughes and I discussed your work on the 22nd of July, I don't think you have the time to do it justice, whereas there was capacity on September. So being realistic, I think that's the better meeting to believe in.
I just wanted to...
Yeah, no, thank you, we've not picked that up.
Mrs Kirkman, councillor Miller?
I'm sure it's quite relevant, but looking at page 30, councillor Code Conduct Complaints, my concern's always been how long these take to get dealt with. We now got three against the district council, which is now seven months old. Now, the public regarding it being sort of high priority, if somebody pretends to do it something wrong, they should be dealt with. And you and I certainly know, well, some of the subcommittees, how long they take to get through the system. And I think the public will expect us to do those quicker. So I don't know if this is the right part of the paper, it comes up again later. Is there anything we can do to speed that process up? The public wouldn't expect us to have a council that might have something very serious in place for seven months.
Mrs Kirkman, thank you.
Yeah, thank you Chair. In respect of these three cases, obviously we don't identify what the complaint is about, who the plaintiff is. But if I refer to our procedure flow chart, there's an opportunity for the monitoring officer to resolve matters informally, but that can take quite a lot of time, councillor. And in terms of you would go to the councillor complaining and get their version of events, you might then go back to the complainant and speak to them. They might then put additional information in. Or in the circumstance of a parish council, you might involve the Chair if it doesn't relate to the Chair, or the district councillor, the group leader, or the group manager. And you can be going around those people and then you're there, monitoring officer, checking in with the independent person to get their view. Now, where these three are in terms of that journey, we're not doing any back and forth on those, they are all with the independent person for that file. This is the recommendation on what to do with those. So these ones, I would expect, I need to be careful, the next meeting's July, if it was the usual next meeting, I'd say it definitely would have been, but councillor Miller, I think the intention is that those would be closed off.
Yeah, I do appreciate the difficulty. You go around in circles having some discussions and seeing from the papers, it's just that really from a public point of view...
Yeah, and councillor Miller, sometimes we're in a position where we say, can we have a response within 14 days? And on 15th day, they say, can I have another week? And that's reasonable. And so that's why we do get to a point where we say, no, we do need to have a response by this date. But often that's after one, two extensions because of extenuating circumstances that might apply.
And could you offer councillor Miller any reassurance with very serious accusations that may come to your attention?
Yes, certainly. I mean, we haven't had very serious allegations. We clearly had a parish council matter that has so far attracted, I think it's 16 in total complaints. So clearly there is an issue there. And that is with our external investigator. So that was immediately processed and has been with the, it was early this year, Chair, the investigation started, clearly more were added and eventually, as modules, so I said no more, in terms of we would accept no more complaints in this regard because we needed to bring the investigation to a conclusion. And that will be happening in a minute. I don't know what those recommendations are or whether it would be necessary to keep the subcommittee to...
And what is the protocol for referring a matter to police if necessary?
Yeah, indeed Chair, and sometimes that can occur at the start, during or at the end of the investigation because if an investigator comes across criminal activity which there is evidence of in their investigation, they will be under a duty to report back to the police. Certainly you can see in my latest paper, there is a matter that became a police matter and therefore I am not doing anything because you don't want to deter the investigation by the police.
Thank you very much, Mrs Kirkman. Mr Councillor Miller, you...
I quite sympathise with you, particularly with parish councils. Having sat on a parish council, we had somebody that's very good at making complaints and he could drag the whole system out by making more and more. So I have a lot of sympathy for you as well.
Thank you very much. Any further questions? Thank you. Any debate? None. We are asked to note the contents of this report and we have raised several issues. Mr Shaw, do you have all those issues? Thank you very much. Oh, and Anthony, hello, how nice to see you. Thank you. Are we happy to note this report? Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item nine, the Audit and Government, the Monitoring Officer's Annual Report. I'm very happy to see this report and I believe, Mrs Kirkman, you're introducing it.
Thank you Chair, yes, this is the first report with this title to come to audit and governance. And the timing was quite pertinent indeed because there is a focus you will see in the report on the model code of conduct and our current code of conduct and some comments on that. What I tried to do with the report is take you through what the role of the monitoring officer is with some of the monitoring officer's functions, which you may or may not be aware of, the importance of the constitution in the work of the monitoring officer, to absolutely put on the record, audit and governance, whether there were any reasons to believe that I believe that the council had taken a decision that would be unlawful and I have had to make no such reports. And I've done a summary of the complaints in more detail and that, councillor Miller, is where I was bearing to completely on all different matters being investigated by the police. We summarised the recent hospitality over the year. Clearly, the COVID pandemic has had a big effect on hospitality for members, but actually quite nice that we've seen an increase for officers because we've had the opportunity to warn and things to say, thank you. A lot of those have been donated straight to the national charity. And then I made some observations, which I'm happy to explain if you have any questions on those, and have finished there. I could have said a lot more, but I think 12 pages plus a large appendix was enough, Chair. Thank you.
It's a very interesting report and I realise that it represents an enormous amount of work as well. Members, do we have any questions on the report? Councillor Godfrey?
Thank you Madam Chair, look, two on page 41. The first line, 11.27, the monitoring officer considers the addition of disclosure of non registrable interests section, assuming section above, which we made to our current code. I wonder if the monitoring officer could explain which sections or which part of the above should be included and where exactly, before we can come onto when that might happen. And secondly, 11.28, it refers to the code of conduct training. I'm ready and waiting, but I haven't got a record of when that is to be. I wonder if I could be reminded or informed.
Thank you councillor Godfrey. Mrs Kirkman?
Thank you Chair, thank you councillor Godfrey. I will keep this brief, but I also need to take you on the journey councillor Godfrey in terms of the statement in 11.27. So we had our updated code of conduct that was adopted by council in March of 2019. That review was a constitution review that's undertaken by the previous monitoring officer and there was a consultant engaged for that work. In that report, it sought to simplify and relabel some of the previous terms that councillors will be aware of in terms of personal prejudicial interests. And it put them under the definition of non peculiar interests. And that was when a scrutiny committee was debated at length and was presented to the board council. And that's included in your papers, what the current code states at 11.24. There was a subcommittee case that heard complaints against a councillor which identified that they felt there was a gap in the new code because the non peculiary interests did not pick up some of what previously would have been picked up. not pick up some of what previously would have been picked up by personal prejudicial interests. If I could summarise that, I would say that the code of conduct had oversimplified. So my comment at eleven point two seven, Councilor Godfrey, is that with the subcommittee raising that in their decision, I believe that the model code of conduct's disclosure of non-registol interest would address the point that was made by that specific subcommittee about that specific complaint. Does that follow what you have there?
Yes, because I think the wording is particularly useful in the model code, in the eleven point two six. Um, particularly the, uh, the sensible, um, A and B towards the bottom of that page.
Yeah.
I think that's an excellent way to proceed. Um, the, the principle of behaving reasonably, it's a, it's a good judge of what we should and shouldn't be doing. Um, but yes, I, I look forward to the detail of how it would be inserted if it had gone like in due course.
Yeah. No, Councilor Godfrey, I absolutely agree that that test about whether to a greater extent it affects a financial interest, a majority inhabitants of the ward affected by the decision. And I mean, this is a reasonable man test. A reasonable member of the public, knowing of the facts, would believe that it would affect your view of the wider public interest. I think they're, they're really helpful tools when you're thinking about those sorts of interests. Now, I, I do really like that, Councilor Godfrey. And then just moving on to the training. So there are two dates in the, in the committee calendar. And at the top of my head, they are the twenty third and the thirtieth, Councilor Godfrey. For existing members, that is the later date of the thirtieth. The time was to be confirmed, Councilor Godfrey. And what I intended to do was to email out to members and check if there was a preference because I'm happy to run them in person for existing members, that's more difficult than for new members. Um, I really would like new members round a very large table to be able to do that. Clearly, the one on the thirtieth is after the twenty first of June announcements, so that might make it more possible. But I might suggest we break it down into two smaller groups. I could be wondering if anyone would even, so that all members could attend.
If we could have a please hold around soon.
I've got a please hold as well, Councilor Godfrey, because the two dates are published in the committee calendar, so I will get onto that tomorrow. Is that okay?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mrs Kirkman. Do we have any other questions? Councilor Crass.
I've got two, I may, Chair.
Of course.
Um, I think one builds on from Councilor Godfrey's questions. But I think first of all, just, uh, I want to thank you, Mrs Kirkman, for this report. Um, I think as Chair said, it's very comprehensive and good to see the full volume of what it is you, you do and the challenges you have. I think we, we spoke in our last meeting about how much work there is and how much more has come along with the COVID situation as well from one type of thing or, or another. But it's, it's very nice to see this and very nice to see all the detail. And I like particularly the observations that you, you put through. It's nice to see your view on, on things. Um, I think just on that and, and building on the comments around the code of conduct and the training, I'm very pleased to see that in particular. And I like the idea of one for new members and one for everyone else. I think in terms of everyone else, um, the recommendations from the subcommittee you referred to spoke to training, particularly with case studies, both for members and officers as well, because it is so complicated and case studies really bring it to life. Offering that training to officers as well is, is as useful as for members, I think. Um, so I think, uh, if that could be offered to, offered to appropriate officers, I mean, that we're all, all operating on the same basis.
Councilor Crass, I just, I just come in there on training purposes. Um, we are a strategic leadership team, which is our corporate heads and their service leads. Um, we have a meeting today and that's where we talk about governance issues. So for example, I've done sessions on, um, the management reports, you know, good governance and reports, how to, how to work recommendations. Uh, that's where we talk about the risk policy. Um, so I would take, I would take a code of conduct update and I put that along with the opposite member protocol because I think it's very helpful for officers to be reminded of that protocol between the two sides as well. And I would also say, Councilor Crass, because we are saying this a lot at the moment, that's also where we get reminded about engagement with our members.
Very good. Thank you. Um, I think, I think my other question then is probably a bit, bit off at a tangent or not, but it's maybe not covered explicitly in, in your paper. But I, I couldn't help noticing that with the recruitment of a, of a new strategic director for place, that there's been a, a change in reporting line for the corporate head regulatory, um, including the, the built environment. And recognising that you work as a matrix structure and that you're all working together, there's no silos across, so it's, there's no clear direct, but there is reporting, but not. Um, just interested in your thoughts and observations on, on that organisational change and how development management previously reported through to you and that's not going to be. And how previously I might have seen or might have imagined quite a direct legal input into development management. What is the relationship going forward in terms of legal and development management? And to give a bit of background in terms of my thoughts, in terms of I see particular legal challenges with development management, obviously, but particularly in Winchester, we have a history of judicial reviews and challenges. And I think maybe a particular, is there a distinction between development applications from residents and private developers versus applications put forward by the council themselves? And is there, what's the relationship between legal and development management and does that change based on applications from private or council?
I will try, try a couple of those of Councilor Crass if I notice something, then come back to that. In terms of the built environment and the regulatory team, so when there was a first draft of the organisation restructure, indeed, planning was moving to me. So I didn't have it before and it was going to move to me. So that, that's probably where you've seen that that was going to be a responsibility in line. Um, you'll be aware that we went to the market, who I directed the first time round and were unsuccessful in recruiting, recruiting anyone. And what happens then is our agents will on our behalf go and find out why. Um, and one of the comments that came back was around actually in that place, people expect to see regeneration of planning together. Um, and therefore that's why that was moved in order to attract a better calibre of candidate that can lead that team. Clearly, Councilor Crass, any legal matters that come from anywhere in the council, they can come from our HRA, they can come from planning, they can be environmental health prosecutions, you know, from, they will always work with, with legal services. And, and what's critical, um, when I was legal just resources or I had finance and legal, was having that client relationship, was having that open channel of information. And certainly, um, with G L Penic and Catherine Knight, they have a close working relationship. Um, they meet on a frequent basis, they meet every three weeks. That wasn't something that previously happened, but we need to know work that's on the agenda. We need to know what, you know, big decisions might be coming back in planning committee. We will check in on progress on enforcement cases. And that's not just Catherine, that's the legal team that sit behind that as well as some of our other senior planning officers. So that would need to happen, Councilor Crass, whether that's under my responsibility or not. If I then reflect on, so executive leadership or the directors and the chief executive and we see, we see all the reports that go to committees and therefore it's monitoring officer, that's how everything is on my radar. Um, and that is how we check that recommendations are worked beautifully and reports are indeed making those sorts of recommendations. What I would say around an application from the council as landowner is that you have to have two hats on. Um, and there have been many legal challenges around the Chinese wall that you have between you. And there have been cases where existing criteria have been too high and there have been cases where existing criteria have been too low. So you do need to strike a balance. Any private developer, any good private developer would always seek to engage with the local planning authority long before they come in to put a planning application before them. So your pre-appication advice, you know, advice on consultations, you know, walk through engagement, which is it looks like you expected a developer to have those conversations. So those conversations do happen between the councillor, developer and the council as local planning authority. And certainly, um, when we look at our reports, I would always look at it from the local planning authority perspective because I know the work goes on for years behind a development proposal and then that's on the report for the local planning authority. And that needs to be thorough and cover all the points that are needed. So that's when I put on my local planning authority hat, more so than I do my developer. And that's where perhaps they're joined in, in his position now would be the development director and I would be the local planning authority director. Uh, that doesn't mean we don't talk, of course we do. Uh, but it just means that you've got that division between your two hats and you've got to be careful that you can keep that wall at a sensible point. But I was involved in a particularly difficult challenge at a previous authority where the wall was too high. Um, so, so this is something that I'm very aware of and we talk about on a reasonably frequent basis at our meetings because it's had to lose some ambitions and is trying to, to do things which have taken the support centre, um, you know, central Winchester. There's a, there's a look around on Councilor Crass. Does that help?
It, it does. I, I think you can understand where I'm coming from. Um, and just making sure that we, as we do recruit the new director of place, that we're set up to support that role. And as we look to do the ambitious things we're looking to do, we've got the right structural bases for those. So thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have any further questions, councillors? Is there a debate? We're asked to, um, to, to note the content of the report. Um, I, and is, and I think I should have noticed that, noted that Mr Harvey had joined us. I'm sorry, I should have formally recognised you, Anthony.
Oh, excuse me.
That's quite all right. So, uh, members, are we happy to note this report? Agreed?
Very agreed.
Thank you very much. We move on to agenda item nine. No, we don't. We move on to agenda item ten, I think, the appointment of auditors. Uh, Mrs Keys, I think you're taking this report.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And so as requested by Mrs Keyes at a previous meeting, I have brought a paper to you giving a bit more information around the appointment of our external auditors and the position that the public sector or the appointments company plays in that. So this report just sets out a bit of background as to how and why the council opted into a PSAA scheme, listed out the auditors who are licensed to, to do local authority audits because you can't choose any auditor. Um, talked a little bit about PSAA's role in the contract and given some information on the bodies that have made their own arrangements. So I can state any questions now.
Thank you very much, Mrs Keys. Can we have any questions, members? Councilor Becker.
Thank you. I just, a couple of questions, but just for clarity really. How many of the five hundred and ten bodies covered by the PSAA utilise the same agreement that we have with EY? And, sorry.
Um, I, I don't know, you know, there are contracts with, with all of those auditors that are listed, so, and they're done on a regional basis. So most of the authorities around us have EY doing their own.
And for those ones that are done by EY, are they all subject to the same, the same fee increase that we've been subject to?
The fees are individual to your authority and they are set as scale fee based on the risk of each particular authority and the size of each particular authority. But generally across the board, it's, it's the same basis of contract between local authorities and your auditor via the PSE.
Thank you, Mrs Keys. And Councilor Bentoot.
Yes, I notice there's an increase. Um, now, as part of the work of the auditors is to help improve matters, shouldn't we be seeing a decrease if they're doing their work properly?
Mrs Keys.
Um, yes, that is a very good question. Um, we, in fact, we've had recent communication from EY, I was in it last week, just setting out the, the, the background to the audit environment for local authorities at the moment. They set out that, um, that they have to do an increased amount of work for our insurance and their regulators are requiring them to do more regulation work. Um, and also they're having difficulty recruiting in the marketplace for auditors with appropriate qualifications to, to do local authority audits or public audits in general. Um, so I think there's two contributing factors to why they're saying they're increasing the fees.
Um, Councilor Bentoot.
I've just come back on that. To be fair, I wasn't questioning the, the work of the auditors, but perhaps it raises the question, perhaps there will be a decrease in future years.
Uh, that's certainly not the indication that the audit firms are giving to clients at the moment. They are looking for this to be a long-term rebasing of the fee. So as well as additional fees that we, um, that are proposed for the work in government grant virus last year, they are looking for a long-term increase in the best thing.
Thank you, Mrs Keys. And Councilor Miller.
I'll tie it to that, two things. One of the things is because various councils have got into more financial trouble around the country, the auditors are going to do more risks to make sure that they're financially sound. So you're actually doing it to have them do extra work because of problems elsewhere to make sure they're not reoccurring here. The second thing about increased fees, having talked to people about what's happening in the county, costs, start cost up and drop it. So the chances of your interviews going down are probably zero or less. There is a total skill shortage of all, all accounts, in fact, in many industries, but particularly in counties, that their pay rises are there and in that, big firms are quite substantial at the moment.
Thank you, Councilor Miller. Uh, Councilor Godfrey.
Thank you, Chair. Me, um, and Mrs Keyes mentioned about the, um, different scales that have been applied and, um, the substantial increase which were proposed by the auditors to which the committee did not take kindly. Um, uh, when we were meant to be in the middle of a contract period, have now, what seems now being applied in the middle of a contract period. So I'm not quite sure, but I am comfortable with a new set of rates, um, being applied and without understanding better the, um, the risks that this council, um, is subject to. Um, or the scale against which those new charges are being applied. And so the report does not quite rightly detail the, uh, the different levels and, uh, scales that apply to, um, different risks and different, uh, size of authority.
Very good point.
But why, why don't we know?
And this brings into my question, I think. It refers to the, um, review by the PSAA against the next appointing period. If we don't understand the range of risks and the relation to the auditing fees, we cannot see that that is a sound process and we would like to see that that is a sound process. And I think, I think we need to understand that range of risks, risks and costs. Because, is there any chance, Mrs Keys, that you can lighten our darkness on this?
Um, I can certainly ask the PSAA, we're a full background on that. Uh, just to clarify, the scale of fee hasn't been rebased yet. EY have submitted a request to the PSAA to rebasement fee. Um, and as an authority, we have not agreed to that for last year and therefore for this year as well. So it's effectively gone to arbitration by the PSAA to decide whether they think EY's proposal is reasonable. Um, and Mr Suter from EY, our audit partner, set out his rationale behind the increased fees going for the rebasing and for the additional work that was defended last year in his annual audit letter and reports this meeting.
Which was not well received.
We didn't clearly understand it. I speak as, as one of the five auditors in this, in this committee.
I think we would like clarification from the PSAA on the range of fees and how that is related to the various risk profiles of different types of council.
Yeah.
Would that meet that?
And where we fit into that.
And where we fit into those ranges. Is it possible that we could have that done, Mrs Keys, that work undertaken?
Also, looking from what I can, the information I can get from the PSAA, the typical areas of risk, which will increase the fee for a local authority would be if you had a local authority company, if you had group accounts, complications like that. So clearly we don't have those at the moment. So comparatively our scale of fee is at the lower end given the size of our council.
Yes, we'd like to understand comparatives, wouldn't we? Will that meet your point, Mr Godfrey?
I hope so.
Yes. And do you have that, Mr Shaw?
Yes, thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any other questions on this report? With taking that action on it, are we happy to note this report? Is that agreed?
Very good.
Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item 11 on pages 65 to 80. Mr Harvey, are you going to introduce this report?
Thank you, Chair, and good evening, members. I'd like to give to you my annual reports in relation to the year ending 31st of March 21. If I can draw your attention, first of all, to agenda page 17 and the final three paragraphs, which are on page four of our report. In line with the government directive, if you can't work at home, you must do so. Basically, it forced us to adopt a new operating model for 2021. And so all of our work is completed virtually. And I'm confident, pleased to confirm, I don't think in any way it's hindered our ability to deliver our work or impact on the quality of our work or prevent me from giving you an annual report opinion in relation to 2021. The opinion is provided for you on page 73 of the agenda pack. As always, it's in three parts. So firstly, that I'm satisfied that sufficient assurance work has been undertaken in order for me to form a reasonable conclusion on the adequacy and effectiveness of which associated to council's internal control problem. And in my opinion, the council's framework of governance for management and control is reasonable. And our work still really found that controls have been working in practice, but many issues and weaknesses have been identified and moved away from the management team to agree appropriate and correct actions and time scales for approvals. Moving on to agenda page 74, that gives a graphical representation of where our audit focus was for the year, over the 20 long year areas undertaken. And that's in line with the annual plan that was approved by the committee back in March. Seems like a couple of years ago. Moving on to page 75, this gives our results for the year. Apologies, some of the numbers haven't quite come through, but it's converted to the committee papers, but the bar chart is clear. So then I'm pleased to confirm number five, substantial insurance opinions for the year. There were seven reasonable, only limited, and this report, there were no insurance opinions issued during the year. And there were six pieces of work, kind of taking the decomposing form of insurance opinion, for example grant certification claims where that doesn't look right. Chiefly, inevitable impact of the pandemic, there are a couple of pieces of work that haven't sufficiently included in some of this report, which was in around sub security and anti-business continuity, although they are continuing to progress, but that form were part of my 21, 22 opinion instead, obviously, because it's time scales. And then there was a couple of reviews where formal reports haven't yet been agreed, but I'm glad to see that the outcomes of those reports change or have an impact on my opinion. Moving on to agenda page 76 and my key observations for the year. So as I said, there are no insurance opinions issued during the year and generally our work found some control problem across the majority of review areas. And beyond the report concluded with limited assurance opinion and a flavour of that on the reminder of page 76 in relation to information governance and particular record intention. Happy to talk through that and a bit more detail if you did. Moving on to the reminder of our reports, as previously reported back to the orders of the government's committee back in November, we have recorded to be expanded and assessed upon 75 years in line with public sector internal standards and all the other standards that apply. That was undertaken while the EY. And I'm pleased to report that it's fully compliant with every element and every standard and therefore there are no disclosures of non-conformist reports. And finally, just moving on to our performance indicators of agenda page 78. We have three performance indicators, one which is really key found with very comparable standards. Secondly, we have a target of delivery of strata report stage of the revolting plan of 95%, fortunately two reviews in progress, but it's kept us at 90%. Had one more of those been completed in some, they look past the target. But to be honest, after the start of the year and how difficult it's been to undertake some of the audit work, I think that's a remarkable achievement and I've really got to pass some of the thanks to all officers who have facilitated the work, I'm sure we had far bigger priorities to be worrying about at the time. And also it's my honour to honour John Bobbeth tonight, who undertook all the work and really adapted to the revolver's operating model fairly seamlessly. Our final performance statistics in around our customer satisfaction response, which is both to officers, senior management team and also to members. And that was 90% across all partners, but I'm pleased to report that it was 100% for just the city council. So again, really just reiterate, reiterate my thanks to all officers. And I should pause there, assuming there won't be one or two questions.
Thank you, Mr Harvey. Councillors, do we have questions? councillor Gueller?
No, it really does sound like nitpicking when you look at it like that. It's only the weaknesses that really, we're looking at exception reporting when we're sitting here to find out what our weaknesses are and are there any weaknesses that could eventually end up as being an elephant in the room? So that would be my only, but it does seem inevitable in the numbers that we have. So if you'd like to expand on that, that would be of use to members who are not used to audit.
I think that's a really fair summary that with five substantial and seven reasonable and only one limited assurance, it needs to be looked at in context. What I've tried to do, however, to the information gatherer view is to reflect the balance between what things were working around where things can also be improved and as with, for a few members who have been on the committee previously, we have a really good relationship with the city council, but not kept away from particular areas and no use us to help in form where things can be improved. So having the opportunity, I think, to have anything, because if you haven't got any, it could indicate it being kept away from certain areas. So really with regards to where, with this particular element of information governance, we look at different strands each year, sort of in around record intention. I think whether there's no sort of consistent overarching policy, different departments have their own attention schedules, it does seem to be a little bit of inconsistency. There's no one group that oversees this element of the process in the whole. Some things that were done for the implementation of GDPR a few years ago haven't necessarily been revisited. Doesn't necessarily mean that things have changed, but really they should be revisited just to make sure that certain unidentified risks are being corrected. And really, I think with, having an agreement on corporate policy consistency across the board, what it will then enable is a lot of the more automatic system based record keeping that a lot of the more innovative software such as shared will provide because it enabled these functions to be switched on. So it's not as much of a manual process, which can then be prone to error or prone to certain things that come along that give you other priorities to be working about. But really, I think it needs to be looked at in the context of the fact that things have a massive degree to deteriorate, they've probably been back to improved a little bit since the start of last year, based upon our audit work and our findings, with everyone working remotely, adopting some new operating models. It's really good to see that things haven't deteriorated and we're just talking about one of the few in the context of all of our 21 pieces of work for the year.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Harvey. And councillor Christ, sorry.
Thank you. Yes, I'm trying to remember when it was when we were with you previously, in March, you said.
Yes, it was March to agree. The plan, the charter will receive the latest progress reports and previously, I think it was March.
Very good, thanks. And obviously, this report is on the functioning of the council. I remember the meeting we had back in March, I don't remember the details of it, there was a discussion around the work plan and the hours put against that work plan and how they were attributed and how the work plan was constructed. Maybe we'll see that at some future point in terms of when we plan or audit what you're doing next in the work and in the next work package. I guess that's coming up at some point, is it, in terms of the next work package? But I guess I've got a question around how's it been in terms of hours wise compared to what you projected it was going to be, given that we had a conversation about how much, how many hours it's going to take to do the work, how many hours did it take to do the work? Any thoughts on that?
We have an agreed number of days with the city council to deliver in terms of all the plan over three year areas. We haven't exceeded those days of through the work that we've undertaken this year. If you want me to look back, it's over a three year period, then we can do that. It's not exposed to the committee previously in terms of knowing at this stage of year how many exact days will be spent on individual reviews before we've got to that point at this point next year. I can only do it on a planned and predictive basis, but we've not had any opportunity to come back to the council and ask for more money in order to undertake our work. I'm confident that we've delivered everything that we said we needed to in those moments. And it's so, we can always flex the plan in between years if there needs to be a particular focus in any one year. A good example might be for our hint something that we don't have a reactive for investigation budget or allocation. It should be the rise that you require our services to form the investigating issue, then of course we would dedicate the resource to that and worry about how that's then accounted for over the three year areas. But again, not what we said earlier, our mouths raised, and that has been the case for this chair as well.
Okay, very good. So no significant impact on man hours based on COVID, so no kind of massive inefficiencies in terms of what you're able to do remotely?
No, we're really pleased to report that obviously where we're local authorities to local authority, we're not for profit partnership, we do need to find one of your staff. None of our staff have done that to come to on some other activities. We took the opportunity to provide some additional training to a lot of our staff and some various other bits and bobs and swag. And inevitably, you know, we're losing a bit at the start of the pandemic where it was difficult to get salary reviews going, when officers had their attention on the immediate initial response to the pandemic, a couple of those days we lost and then we got back, but then it really began even harder through the periods. And what we were also able to do, which was really pleasing to know in view of the previous agenda item is where we're local authority backed and our salaries increasing on the national high awards, but then we were able to offset this year because we haven't been travelling and that's a significant proportion of our non-salary based costs is offset that salary increase, it's saving the tracking which we're writing parcels to all of our partners. So the 2.75% nationally available, it was a room back in October, I think, last year, we were able to contain them to all the parcels to our partners, even though that's from that side of our agreement.
Very good. No, thank you. I appreciate that. The report wasn't about your work package and your fulfillment against that specifically, but it's interesting, the theme of what we're just hearing about, services being provided and how they get provided and the impact of COVID and what that means in terms of capabilities and costs, which is interesting to hear your comments in that regard.
Thank you. And I think if there's some very good bits of the virtual working or the hybrid working that we can cherry pick and make us more efficient, then of course, that's where a quarter bit of our attention's been over the course of the last year, because it's been a big land cow for us. But I think there's huge marks that we can take from it, which just makes it more efficient and reasonable late at night. Thanks to the good old ways of coming from one committee to another, trying to be in two places at once with different starts on. It's rewarding how much fun travelling is again, of saving a huge amount in the actual over the last 15 months.
But it is very nice to see you.
Thank you, you teacher.
councillor Millar?
Just a question, given on the queries we had earlier about the increase in external audit fees, is there some more work either you could do or officers could do, which would then overall saves more money on the external audit fees? Because normally it has a time base, so is this something we could do either internally or via you that would actually take someone up EY's cost up?
Yes. It's quite interesting. In the old days of the audit commissions, this has gone back a fair few years now, 70 or 10 years, maybe, before the first round of the outsourced and so the private sector, the audit commission would in detail look at our work in papers for those areas that they were interested in and would post upon our work, be able to post remarks on our testing. None of the external private audit firms rely on our work to that extent. I've had explanations given previously that because of the way they operate, they would have to do more testing in order to rely on our testing than it would be, for example, just to see one walk, one transaction through the system. With that in mind, they do ask for all of our formal reports, they do take interest in their formal reports and they do use the outcome of our work to inform their particular things. I think the difference is we look at very difficult things. All of the vast bulk of the external audit work is based upon the statement of accounts and the accuracy of the statement of accounts, whereas we're looking at the internal systems and we look at the entire council operations, whereas obviously we've dealt with the markets in and around the statement of accounts and also with the ongoing concern by what they do. So it's a sort of roundabout way of thinking, even if we spend a lot more effort in those areas, they wouldn't necessarily be able to rely on our work and we do look at very, very, very difficult things.
However, it is an interesting point, isn't it, that perhaps we should draw to the attention of the PSAA, that the internal auditors have been able to achieve efficiencies during COVID, whereas the external auditors have found additional costs? I wonder if we should reflect that.
I think that's a very good point.
Well, we're very happy to get that. Can we make that point to PSAA, please, Mrs Keys? I think we'd like to do that. Thank you, Mr Harvey. Do we have any other questions, Mr Harvey? Are we happy to note that report? Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. I think that brings us to the conclusion of a formal part of this meeting. I'd like to say again how lovely it has been seeing you all and thank you for your attendance. councillor Gueller?
Just before we finish, we have raised several points tonight, Chair, and that I think formally, I think we should ask for an informed email well before the next meeting to give some idea so that we can go into the next meeting with some informed conclusions or which we can test and question.
Mrs Kirkland, are you happy that we provide an interim update before the next meeting? Because we have raised several points, as you say, councillor Gavin.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I think some of those items, that will be straightforward. The only caveat is it's only five, six weeks till the next meeting, so those papers will be going through the stages already, so it will depend on capacity and resource as if we can get all of those back to you. I'm not saying some of those, I mean, Mrs Keys will have to be agent for PSAA, so that might depend on that response. I'm looking at the work programme and considering the non-operational assets and Covid-starred related matters. I think, I think the urgency will relate to the reassurances that this committee wants in respect of health and safety. So I think that one is more important and therefore I would put that as the top priority on those to come back to you for the next meeting if I captured those, Chair.
Mr Shaw?
Yes.
You're happy with that? councillor Gavin.
I'd still like the push that we do here before, because we have not got that many meetings and then we're into the autumn already, you know? It does behoove us to actually get some work done this year, as last year was such a...
We were preoccupied with other matters.
One might say so.
We were all very busy, I'm sure. Thank you, councillor Gavin, that's a good point. And thank you, members. That concludes the formal business of this meeting and I'm closing this meeting at 19:43. Thank you. Have we finished recording?